It is good district for the trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 9, 2025. And we are going to put this meeting on hold for about five minutes. We will reconvene with closed session. To convene with our meeting, we're going to start with agenda item number one, and that's adoption of the agenda as submitted. And this is for possible action.
Second.
So motion by trustee Walker and second by trustee Walt. Any more discussion? Seeing on any public comment? Seeing on all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number two, adjournment to closed session per NRS 288.220 to discuss labor relations with the district's management representatives. And this is for discussion only.
...
Into our public session at 6:01 PM. And we're gonna do Agenda Item Number Four, Flag Salute. Michelle Trust Peterson, if you can please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, Trustee Peterson. Agenda Item Number Five, Superintendent's Report. And this is for information only, Superintendent Phelan.
Thank you, thank you President Ramirez. Welcome to the December Board Meeting. We have some very special guests this evening from Seliger Elementary School, led by the incredible Mrs. Carrie Pryor and music teacher, Mr. Van Norman. And so, Mr. Van Norman, if you would like, you can bring all of your performers out here.
Absolutely. So trustees, if you'd like to stand under the exit sign, I guess back here, so you get a good view of the students.
Our fourth grade and fifth grade Seliger Choir students. And we're here to sing for you a few tunes to bring in the holiday season, starting with Carol of the Bells.
Hark, hark, the bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away, Christmas is here, bringing cheer. Ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, ding dong, that is a song. Ding dong, ding dong, all caroling. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, hollering and telling the tale. Giddy, giddy, wild people singing songs of a cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On others stand, down with the rein, there's a turkey, too, every home. Hark, hark, the bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away, Christmas is here, bringing cheer. To young and old, meek and bold, ding dong, ding dong, that is a song. Ding dong, ding dong, all caroling. One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, hollering and telling the tale. Giddy, giddy, wild people singing songs of a cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. Merry, 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 merry Christmas. On others stand, down with the rein, there's a turkey, too, every home. On others stand, down with the rein, there's a turkey, too, every home. Ding dong, ding dong.
Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Not only green when the summer's here, but also when it's cold and clear. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy leaves are so unchanging. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy candles shine so brightly. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy candles shine so brightly. From just a soul in green and bright, let all these glitters pour the sky. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, thy candles shine so brightly.
And one last one, featuring a very famous reindeer. Not Olive, but Rudolph.
You know Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Nixon? Colin and Cupid and Donner and Blitzen? But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, reindeer, had a very shiny nose, like a lightbulb. And if you ever saw it, saw it, you would even say it glows like a flashlight. All of the other reindeer, reindeer, used to laugh and call him names like Pinocchio. They never let poor Rudolph, Rudolph, join in any reindeer gear, like an apple leaf. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, ho, ho, ho. Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you ride my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeer loved him, loved him, as they shouted out with giffy, giffy. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, reindeer, go down in history. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, ho, ho, ho. Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you ride my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeer loved him, loved him, as they shouted out with giffy, giffy. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, reindeer, go down in history.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Van Norman. Maybe trustees, maybe we could get you to stand behind the kiddos, so Mr. Davis can grab a picture to share for all of us.
Our parents, do you want to try to grab a better picture? I know some of you are off in the back. We can make them wait, we can make these kids wait all day.
So as a, as a thank you from the board. So, and we have enough to give you seven. God eat them on the way home. Six for seven.
Six for seven!
You know, I see these kids counting candy canes. They don't trust you, Mr. Van Norman.
I think I'm generally giving them too many rather than two for you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you so much for coming. Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad. There goes a phone for the evening.
Do you have any other announcements?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, well, now that we got everything warmed up. Few recognitions this evening. First, to Mr. at the Silver Campus, Carson High Silver Campus, Mr. Dan Etabaria. I'll send a picture to you later, trustees, of what is an incredible... Mr. Etabaria is well-known for dressing up. And he went all out and looked like... I actually don't know exactly what he was... It's like a 17th century, 18th century king. And he does this for his students on a regular basis, trying to engage them and just make the learning environment fun over at Silver Campus. And just incredible. So I'll share that with you a little bit later. Wanted to recognize Mr. Race Malmed at Seliger Elementary School. He is a PE teacher over there, but also leads their MTSS team and is an admin intern. Recently, he created an incentive for first-quarter attendance and behavior. So students who had, who were recognized with the Magnificent Meti Award, because it's the Seliger Pirates. So they had zero behavior issues, minor or major, and only one or zero attendance marks earned a trip to the Night Monsters game up at Lake Tahoe. And so they had 137 students who earned that. And you're familiar with the Pumpkin Patch. He used all of proceeds that he had earned first class at the Pumpkin Patch to use to help pay for that, along with PTO. So that was just great, great effort, great event for Seliger. Over at Empire, there's a special ed paraprofessional over there, Connie Cortez. Every time I'm at Empire and Connie sees me, she gives me a really hard time. And she is wonderful. Just really kind and compassionate with some of the most challenging students. Most, the students with the greatest needs over at Empire, just going above and beyond every day at that school. Fritch, would like to recognize their school psych, Kristy Keeley Goldberg. She's actually shared between Carson High School and Fritch. But as Mr. Brown noted, balancing between two different sites is not easy, but like the UPS carrier, she can deliver. Up at Carson High School, one of their, they encourage staff to attend performances and games. And recently, one of their new teachers, Mr. Brendan Dowling, is moonlighting as a superfan and apparently was running up and down the court, acting as a superfan, screaming "Let's Go", trying to get everyone on the court really excited for a recent game. And so, that, just gotta love the effort and the desire to get that going up there. Wanted also to note, just with the completion of the fall, sports season had quite a bit of success up at Carson High. So for girls golf, they had one golfer who qualified for state. Girls tennis as a team competed in regionals. Boys soccer made it to the regional semifinals. Football made to the regional quarterfinals. Girls volleyball was regional runner-up and in the state semifinals. Boys cross-country was third at regionals and competed at state. Girls cross-country was regional champions. Girls cross country was regional champions and second at state. We had three coaches who were coaches of the year. Wade Greenlee for girls golf, Russ Munion for girls cross country, and Steve Nelms for football. So just overall, a real successful fall season up at Carson High. Lastly, we have a early release day, minimum day on December 10th, which is tomorrow. We have minimum day for all students on Friday, December 19th. Christmas break will run from December 22nd through January 2nd. January 5th, which is a Monday, will be professional development day for staff. And then classes resume on January 6th. And that is all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Superintendent Feeling. Agenda item number six, board reports, board member comments, and this is for information only. I believe we have Carson High School representative Cooper. Can you please come up and provide with your report? And then I have the report for Carson High School Silver Campus.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cooper Feeling, the Carson High School Main Campus Student Body School Board Representative. Tonight, just a few things. This week at Carson High is our holiday week, which is just Spirit Week, meant to kind of bring up spirits and just especially setting in before our last week, next week finishing up. Just kind of getting everyone semi-excited to finish. But, so we have just a bunch of dress-up days. Yesterday was pajama day, thank you. Today was our holiday wear. Tomorrow is twin day. Thursday is whiteout and Friday is, you know that one too. Should know this.
A fun day, I'm sure.
Oh, it's Santa versus Grinch. There we go. So red and green. And then along with this, we are doing our, typically in like March, April area, we do what is called You Matter Week, which is a week devoted to the mental health of our students. We set up stations in the library to just kind of ease the mind. They're like stress balls, like coloring, just like simple stuff, just to kind of ease things up. But as this year, we are hosting the Nevada Association of Student Council State Conference at that time, as well as prom. We kind of combined that week with holiday week this year. So we also have, every day at lunch, we have stations in the library devoted to just supporting the overall mental well-being of our students. And then along with that stuff, all of our winter sports seasons have started with girls and boys basketball at the varsity JV and girls, or and freshman levels. And then we also have girls and boys wrestling, as well as skiing for all. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Cooper, and good luck on your finals, and I hope Santa treats you well. You heard Santa. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, I do have the report for Carson High School Silver Campus. Maggie was not able to attend, but I am more than happy to read it. So the Carson High Speech and Debate Team competed at North Valley High School in Reno on the 5th and the 6th. They did very well, and they are currently getting ready to host the next one at Carson High on the 23rd and 24th of January. They are in need of judges, so if, if any of us would like to, are willing to surrender our time and help, they would greatly appreciate. We are to contact Jillian Schofeldt, I'm sorry if I chopped that last name, if you would like to sign up. And then Ms. Christian Stengkrass is challenging the engineering class to make pine derby cars, and the students are loving it. Each car is unique, and they will be competing against the main campus on Thursday in a pine wood derby race. As a grand recipient, Ms. Tara Feeling has completed the small interactive garden with the girls PE class. The flowers will bloom early spring and will surely be a sight to be, to behold. Silver Campus is celebrating the festive spirit with all week dress-up days. Monday was pajama day. Today was holiday wear day. Wednesday is twin day. Thursday is wear white, and Friday is Grinch versus Santa. They are excited to see all of the creative ways the staff and students choose to dress up. Yesterday, December 8th, Silver Campus held a community connection event where community members, Kim and Adam Cox, visited the campus and taught the students and their parents all about becoming a hairstylist and/or barber. It was very interesting, and they would like to thank them for their time. Cookies and cram power hour, power hour study hall was today, December 9th and Thursday, December 11th, from 2:15 to 3:45. Students can come down, come study and get support for their finals, which will be on December 17th and 19th, 17th through the 19th. And then also, Dr. Molden shared with me that our former student board representative, Ms. Caitlin Nugan, we all remember her. She has been selected as a Quest Bridge National College Match recipient of a full four-year scholarship. Isn't that just super amazing? She will be attending Carlton College in state of Minnesota. And she shared, she shared with Dr. Molden that she owes her success to the Carson City School Board for allowing her the opportunity to find her voice while representing the Silver Campus. I thought that was super, super amazing. So congratulations to Caitlin. Very well deserved. And that concludes the report for Silver Campus. And again, Cooper, thank you so much for coming and for your report, and Merry Christmas. Okay.
Trustee Ramirez?
Yes.
Could I add something?
One more? Sure, go ahead.
I forgot. So, and I apologize, trustees, if one of you are going to mention this, but we had the NASB conference this last weekend, and we had some recognitions there, some awards that were won. So if you, if you weren't aware, Mr. Varner, you won Director of the Year.
Yay, congratulations.
Mike Walker won Individual School Board Member of the Year.
Yay.
Molly Walt won New School Board Member of the Year.
Right, and congratulations.
And Mrs. Cortez in the back there was the, I forgot actually the exact name.
Support.
Board Administrative, yeah, Board Administrative Assistance of the Year. So a lot of recognitions for, for you all, the team. Also recognize that was a nomination from this board was Rosio Hernandez with the Nevada Independent for the reporting that she does. And so she was just very grateful for the recognition, and so glad she was able to enjoy that event. That's it, and that's all. Sorry.
That's fabulous news. Congratulations to each and every one of you. That's amazing and very well deserved. That's wonderful news. Excellent. Okay.
You want to do it now? How about shoot it after the meeting?
Yeah.
We'll do a photo.
Okay, we can continue then. Awesome. Okay, very good. So we are done then, and we will start off with Nevada Association of School Board NASB update. Trustee Varner, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I do. There were some awards given out, and some of them was for Carson City, so congratulations to everybody who won them. But I wanted to point out also that we nominated a lot of other good people that could have easily won one of these awards. There was a lot of nominations this year, but I wanted to point out that this board recommended School Administrator of the Year for Dr. Sue Molden and Josh Billings. The School District Employee Making a Difference. We nominated Elizabeth Wingfield and Sharif Fletcher. And then District Level Administrator of the Year, Impacting Student Achievement. We nominated Dan Sattler and Dr. Tanya Scott. Veteran School Board Member of the Year, we recommended Lupe Ramirez. Individual Friend of K-12 Public Education. We recommended, nominated Dana Whalley, or W A, excuse me, W H A L E Y. And Carson City, from Carson City Toyota. And Mayor Lori Bagwell. For Innovator of the Year, Educator of the Year, Jennifer Chandler. And I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we made a lot of the nominations, and like I said earlier, that any of these people could have really won and deserved to win. And hopefully, in the future, they will win. So I wanted to follow up on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
And I do have some other information from.
Okay.
We had our joint meeting on December 4th, the joint meeting between the Executive Board and the Board of Directors. And just some of the highlights that came out of that. Approved a two-year contract with Tom Clark Solutions for lobbying services for the next two years. Irene Bustamante Adams was elected the new president of the association for this next year. And on the 5th, on Friday, we started our yearly conference. And it was held on Friday and Saturday, and I'd like to say that it was an excellent conference. We had some very good keynote speakers and breakout sessions. One of the keynote speakers was the new state superintendent, Victor Wakefield. And he kind of gave an overview of his first hundred days, what he wants to accomplish in his new position. And I know that he's going to be traveling around the state, meeting with school superintendents and board members in the next few months. We need to thank the executive director, Harris, his staff, who are mainly volunteers, and the NASB president, Mike Walker, for all their hard work putting the conference together. One other thing that I'll mention is sometime in the near future, a survey will be sent out to everyone, all the board members from NDE. And there'll be more details coming out about this, but it's going to be very important for you to complete the questionnaire and return it, because NDE is asking for our input and our direction on different issues. So when you receive that, if you would really please return that, that would be greatly appreciated.
Trustee Varner, could I help you with that just a little bit?
You can.
So the state has a commission looking at school and district rankings. And this is in Senate Bill 460.
Right.
Which are adding accountability measures. They're increasing for schools, principals, and also for school boards. And so that survey is going to get our opinion about some of those proposals. And it'll be important to answer those so that our feedback is used as a determination is made by the state moving forward. So there's a committee that's meeting every month through the rest of the school year, and they will be making recommendations. There's three school trustees that are serving on that. There's superintendent, as well as community and business leaders.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. The highlight, one of the highlights of this conference for me was they had a new thing they tried this year, and it was student performances. And they brought in a dance, a group of Native American dancers from Natchess Elementary School, a jazz band from Mendive Middle School, and a orchestra from Monty Ranch High School. And I got to say that these kids were amazing. The orchestra, you couldn't, you wouldn't know they were high school students. They were that good. The jazz band, the same, and the dancers were really enjoyable. So I think it's going to start a new tradition in the future. At conferences, you will see student performers coming in to start the conference. So it was really great overall.
That makes it super exciting. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was really, they were really, really good. So thank you.
Very nice. Well, thank you. Thank you for that update. And then board announcements. Michelle?
All right, I've got a couple. First up, I, from the high school, my report today is from Rodney Wade. He says, some of this is, is just kind of talking about things that already happened. He says the boys varsity basketball opened the season with a thrilling 67-66 win over Reed, and that we have been 0-9 in previous meetings, and so it was very exciting to have that one-point win. Caitlin Jackson, 17 points. Ethan Cook, 16 points. Gabe Borse, 10 points. He says girls varsity basketball also secured wins against Reed and played Golden Sierra. In the arts and activities, winter orchestra concert was December 2nd, choir and musical theater winter concert on the 3rd. Tonight, I believe, is also a musical theater event. Let me look at that. I have it in a different tab. Musical theater concert tonight, and then the regular choir is tomorrow, or Wednesday. Yeah, that's tomorrow. Let's see. He also has some student engagement. Kyle Allen, who we all have met a few times, he was selected as the national representative for the state of Nevada. He's one of only two for the 2026 United States Senate Youth Program. And then Carson High 10th grader Kevin Morriscall. He earned an honorable mention for the 2025 Nevada Reading Week Art Contest. And then they also included Caitlin Nguyen, as you have mentioned, being chosen as a Quest Bridge National College Match recipient of the full four-year scholarship. So that's all I have for Carson High. And then Ms. Kirk Shinks over at Mark Twain. She mentioned that they had their lottery last week, and it was a lot of fun and well-attended. It's one of their strongest family engagement nights of the year, so it's always looked forward to. And she says, I would really like to celebrate our implementation of the CKLA. It's been going so well at our site, and the teachers are embracing the change. When Ms. Kasaka and I watched the lessons, we are so impressed with the level of rigor and also the level of engagement from our students. We will map test next week, which I think by now may mean this week. We are excited to see if we have some measurable growth. Then she mentions the tree lighting. Ms. Bourne always does such an amazing job and works so hard on behalf of the school and the district and the community to make sure that our fifth graders have a strong showing there. So she wanted to make sure she got a pat on the back for that. And then she just is excited. She said, there's a spirit of joy in the halls at Mark Twain, and we're excited to be celebrating the holidays and our students' success. That's it.
Nice. Thank you so much. Rebecca?
All right, Fremont from Dr. Ward. She said the PTA had a successful reindeer lane gift shop that allowed students to shop for family members. Volunteers helped students wrap the gifts, and she wants to thank her staff for fabulous first semester. They are the hardest-working group of individuals. The entire staff of 91 would like to wish the school board and the community members a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Nice, very nice. Thank you. Richard?
I just have a short one is from Principal Brown from Fritsch Elementary. He just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday period and Merry Christmas. And Ms. Pryor, if I could, Principal Pryor, thank you for bringing those students in. I look forward to that every year. And I was a little concerned at first, because I didn't see any kids here. And I thought, well, this is the last board meeting of the year, and we're not going to get our normal singer, so thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Matt?
Thank you. I have two updates. First one from Ms. Hoppy at Eagle Valley Middle School. They have a winter semi-formal dance coming up Wednesday, or excuse me, December 17th. Information will be going out in Parent Square, and that'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 at the EVMS Big Gym. They're having an award ceremony and recognition rally for students during the day, Friday, December 19th. They're looking forward to having Mayor Bagwell at Eagle Valley Middle School to recognize the lucky winners of the most improved attendance. And they'll also recognize students for perfect attendance, good grades, as well as grades for the first semester. And then they'll be having another VIP lunch to invite families to Eagle Valley. That'll be Friday, December 19th. We have, she says that they're happy to open doors again and invite parents and guardians for the lunch. Sixth grade will be from 10:20 to 10:50. 6th grade will be from 10:20 to 10:50. 7th grade will 10:50 to 11:20. 8th grade, 11:20 to 11:50. And then lastly, she wants to have a huge thank you to the fun EVMS staff who dressed up for incognito dress-up days. Recently, it was the 67th Day of School, and a majority of the staff wore attire that represented 6'7", and the students loved it. And from Ms. Robinson. She said that the boys' basketball season is wrapping up this week. Carson High School has invited them to play their game against Eagle Valley at the high school gym. And that'll be tomorrow. The boys are very excited, and the cheer team will be there to cheer them on. The Toniva Basketball Championship is this Saturday at the Douglas Community Center. And the girls' volleyball is in the middle of their tryout period, and the season starts next week. They'll have a winter band concert this Thursday, December 11th, at 6:30 in the CMS Cafeteria. First time I've ever heard that word. They've been practicing all semester, so they're looking forward to hearing their beautiful music. And they'll wrap up the semester. The students and staff are working hard to make sure the students are learning and earning their credits for promotion to the high school.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Molly?
Yeah. So for Empire Elementary School, a quick update. Their family winter Wonderland event is moved from December 12th to December 11th, starting at 5:30. And then we had a Parks and Rec and Open Space Commission meeting last Tuesday. Just one thing to note regarding the school district is that they were updating their, or recommending an update, a proposed update to the Parks and Rec and Open Space Department fees and charges policy. We did end up tabling it or having staff bring it back. One thing to note is that I did ask that with consulting with Mr. Feeling is that when they have, due to popularity of the park system and park facilities, shall be scheduled or reserved in the following order. Number one is public programs, activities, and events. And we asked that maybe they put in parentheses, "school district," programs and events as well as a priority for those scheduling since so much of our school population uses, you know, the community, the Parks and Rec and Open Space, or really Parks and Rec community stuff as well. And so that was just something to note on that end. That was it.
Excellent. Thank you, Molly. Mike?
So Sealeger Elementary School has a lot of great things happening, as we've seen and heard. They're taking MAP tests. And Ms. Pryor promises there's going to be stellar results when they get those all compiled. She promised me. And they also have some fun holiday games going on. And if I still worked there, I'd be fighting to be at the top of that leaderboard, probably slugging it out with Ms. Saccharius. So we have that going on. And they had an event where kids used $50 of their rewards money to take a picture with a pig. And if Ms. Pryor was really industrious, she would have charged the school $1,000 collectively so that they could see their principal kiss a pig. So instead of just posing with the pig, she could have actually taken it to the next level. You just give me a call. I have all kinds of ideas for you. So seriously, it sounds like great things are happening at Sealeger. Thank you for the student performers. And then is it Race? Thank you for your hard work. And I would tell you to be careful. I know somebody who was a student intern at Sealeger, and the work never stopped. So just word to the wise. So that's it for Sealeger Elementary School.
Yeah, so sorry, I meant to mention this as well. But I wanted to think, you know, because Friday night's event downtown, the tree lighting, is all honesty. A large amount of that crowd comes to watch their students, to watch their kids. And we wouldn't have that without the schools, the 5th grade. And there were so many teachers, principals, that are putting in their own time. It's after-hours, and they're there to support the students. And so I just want to thank you all for attending that because you did, they volunteered. There were so, I think every principal from every school was there that evening. And, you know, you don't, you all don't have to. And so thank you for being there, and the teachers as well, because it was a phenomenal performance. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. So.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to say something. Okay, all right. So for me, I just want to give a big shout-out to the music teacher, Nick Jacquez, and his student that is taking to the Rose Parade on New Year's Day. I think that that is beyond amazing. When I read Dan's email, and thank you, Dan, for informing us about this, you know, amazing stuff that's happening in our district. I was, I got goosebumps and I got choked up because I'm thinking, this is just incredible for both of them to be able to go and represent Carson City School District is just incredible. So congratulations for their huge accomplishment. We look forward to watching the parade. So. Okay, that concludes my report. Agenda item number seven, association reports. And this is for discussion only. Do we have anyone from the association? See none? Okay. Agenda item number eight, public comment. Do we have in, and by the way, this is for discussion only. Do we have in-person public comment? Please come on up. And just as a reminder, in making public comments, speakers are asked to come to the table in podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify yourselves for the record. Commenters are instructed to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and not simply repeat comments made by others. And again, this is for discussion only. Please state your name.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelsey Penrose. And while some of you might know me from my day job, I am coming to you with a new hat today, which I am a new instructor at WNC as an English professor. And I'm here with one of my students today. Part of our Introduction 101 class is rhetoric. And so I offered them extra credit if they could come to the school board meeting and practice their rhetoric skills. So I've got Maddie here with me. So the reason that I wanted to come today is this is my first semester teaching. And I was very surprised to find that the demographics of WNC have changed significantly from when I went there. Typically, as a community college, we have a lot of older students, veterans, a mix of 20s, 30s, and then seniors who want to come and learn. But now the demographics of my classes are predominantly, meaning 99%, recent graduates or dual enrollment students, which I was very surprised about. And it's very cool. I'm very excited about it. But it also gives me a broader understanding of what's kind of going on with my students. And I found myself very concerned with their preparation in them coming into my classrooms. And I believe that that's for a couple of different reasons. And I definitely do not think that this is a Carson issue. I don't think it's a Nevada issue. Unfortunately, I think it's a systemic issue of education in general. But I wanted to kind of bring you some data to work with, as I believe that we're all partners in education. And mostly, I wanted to come because I felt that I needed to because my students are telling me that they feel stupid, or they feel ignorant, or they feel like they're failures. And this is not because they are lazy or not doing the work. It's because they don't have the foundational skills that they should have coming into my courses. And after talking to other faculty, this is just kind of an issue that goes around. And so also because I'm a journalist, I love research, and I'm a big dork about it. And so I did a lot of deep dives into it. And under the Nevada academic curriculum standards, we have very specific things that students should be hitting in their coursework, going through everything from kindergarten up into their senior year of high school. And through those, there's very specific things that students should be learning before they graduate. And this includes writing essays, composition, rhetoric, writing different types of essays, and doing research papers with like numerous sources. But I can tell you that in my 101 course, which has all but one of my 32 students are recent graduates, the majority of them coming from Carson High and Douglas High, that.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we have met the three-minute limit.
Oh, my God, no. I was even, I even practiced it to try to hit mine.
You are welcome to provide us with any documents that we can include.
Okay, I will just, if I can just have 30 seconds to just tell you what my.
I'm so sorry. We are limited to three minutes. My apologies.
Okay, no problem at all. It's my own fault for going on my tangents. But here we have Maddie, and she will also speak.
Hi, my name is Madison Lotterbaugh. I go by Maddie. I'm a recent Carson High School graduate with the class of 2025.
Can you speak up closer to the microphone?
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
So I'd like to start off by saying I am struggling as a new college student. I am enrolled in the fall 2025 semester at WNC. And I am falling behind in my classes. And that's not because I lack the desire to learn, as Ms. Penrose said. But it's because I find myself struggling with the basis, the foundation that I was supposed to have. And I'm lost. I don't know what to do. And it's not because I'm stupid. It, I just wasn't provided with all of the necessities. And I feel like I was failed as a student. And a lot of that comes from what I learned not to do. I kept my head down because I thought success was a pat on the back and a passing grade. And they taught me to graduate. They taught me to graduate, and they didn't tell me what was supposed to come after that. And I think a lot of that was because they decided that I was a C before I decided that I was a C. And I struggled with that a lot. And I didn't get all of the help or the necessities in learning that I thought that I needed to. So when I came to college, it was hard. It was very hard to know what I needed to do because I was taught to walk but never to run in college. And that really stuck with me, and it's hard. And I want to be a part of that change if there is something I can do to help the upcoming students that are graduating. Because I feel like it's desirable to want to learn, to want to grow, to want to grow out of college. When I went into high school, I had this idea that I was going to go to a four-year university and I find myself in community college. And I'm not saying that that's a bad thing. But I had a lot of hopes for myself, and I didn't have a lot of support around me. So I think if we can change that and if I can offer advice and insight as a former student, that I would be very happy to. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to provide those comments. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and we have online public comment. Ms. Renee?
Trustee Ramirez, it is for a particular item, so I will mention that at the time the item's presented.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so then at this moment, I will close. Or I should ask, is there any additional public comment? See none? Okay, so then at this moment, I will close public comment. Agenda item number nine, discussion and possible action on recommended approval of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029, tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson Educational Group Association, CESA, with an estimated fiscal impact of $468,667. And that is for possible action. Welcome, Mr. Spencer Winward and Mr. Dan Sadler.
Present Ramirez, members of board, thank you. Dan Sadler for the record. It's my privilege to bring before you tonight refreshed agreement with our education support professionals, our classified employees, and CESA July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2029. We had really, really good conversations with our employee organization. You'll see before you that we have many language changes. There is an update for the Progressive Discipline Manual. Some changes to sick leave. Annual leave payout clarification. Expanded sick leave conversion rules. There's, one of the highlights is a new language for credit for prior work experience and promotions in district. That's been language that's been needed for some time. An agreement to create a salary working group with CESA that we look forward to getting together to have some discussions about that. There's some revised information specific to safety and closure operations and incident command team. And as a final highlight, the bilingual services program. The recommendation would be to approve the agreement. And I just want to also mention a few names, starting with Frank Flaherty, Brian Lee. They did a tremendous job in working with the team this year. Also, CESA members, Eva Reynolds, Elizabeth Rupke, and Bev Singleton represented CESA very well, very productive conversations. And also my partner in crime here, Mr. Spencer Winward and Mr. Joel Locke for representing the district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? See none? Okay, if there are no questions.
I do have something.
Okay.
I would just like to thank you guys for all the work you did on it. And also just for the people who don't have knowledge, the increase, the $468,000 is basically due to the increase in PERS. Is that correct?
Yes, the lion's share of that is due to the PERS increase being covered by the district. And that covers the two years of the biennium is what that amount reflects.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, I will.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029 tentative agreement with the following Carson City School District Bargaining Group, Carson City Educational Support Association, CESA, with an estimated fiscal impact of $468,667.
I'll second it.
So motion by trustee Walker and second by trustee Varner. Any board discussion? See none? Any public comment?
Trustee Ramirez, there was public comment provided online by Mr. Brian Lee expressing his gratitude for the work that was placed and put into the CESA conference. And also like to urge the passage of the tentative agreement that the comments will go into the permanent record and I'll forward copies to the trustees.
Excellent. Thank you, Renee.
And I think we should also note that the vice president of NSCA is in the room. And so thank you, Mr. Wallace, for your representation as well.
Yes, thank you. We definitely are very grateful for your work. Okay, so motions on the table. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler and Mr. Winward. Agenda item number 10, discussion and possible action to approve a revised capital improvement plan for the Carson City School District for fiscal years 2026 through 2020, excuse me, through 2030. And this is for possible action. Mr. Spencer Winward again, and Superintendent Feeling, and Mr. Mark Johnson. Welcome.
Take it away here, Mr. Johnson.
What do you want me to say? Mark Johnson, project manager for the school district. They have a copy of the capital improvement project proposed, page 60, page 61. It's similar for the ones in the past. It has more items on it for 2026. I'm available for questions.
Okay, I think we all had an opportunity to review these. Do we have questions or comments from the board?
The comment I would make is we have these regular ongoing meetings about the capital improvement bond meeting.
Yes.
And we're always provided a lot of detail of what is occurring in our maintenance of our schools. Our schools are aging, and they're getting older, no doubt about it. But I wanted to compliment. But I wanted to compliment you because I think you and your work, you do the very best you can to keep them in very good shape. And so I appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate the money that we're able to spend to keep them going because, like I said, they're not getting any younger, and so thank you.
A lot of money is going into preventative maintenance and ongoing maintenance to keep them going. If you notice, like the very first one on asphalt, they're giving me a lot more money for like asphalt maintenance, most schools don't even look at that, but they've been giving me more money years before, like 100,000. And then they started giving me 150 for crack seal and seal coat. And we started, and I've asked for slurry seal to prevent the ongoing maintenance of our asphalt, nobody even looks at that. I have a civil background, I look at that. Because it wears out after 20 years, but if you can do ongoing maintenance of our asphalt, we can let it keep it going for 25, 30 years. So we started doing a maintenance program, slurry seal. I started two years ago. It lasts like seven years and look like a seal coat, that's real thin, slurry seal's real thick. And I started that two years ago, and I'll be doing that, they've given me additional funds to do that on our parking lots, we don't have a lot of asphalt, but parking lots, playgrounds. That's one of the additional work we're doing.
Well, I think we all know it's very important to do the preventative maintenance, so. Thank you.
You pay a little bit now, or you pay a lot later?
Yes.
You know, with the economy and the increase of everything that we're all experiencing, can you address what it has done to your budget?
Oh.
Okay, yeah, but I mean, I just think it's, I think it's important that the community.
I'd be happy to.
That the community knows as well of, you know, it's not like the, because the cost of everything increased that you were able to then, you know, come back to us and say, hey, I need another $3 million because asphalt, you know, costs so much. But if you could address what it's done to your budget, I appreciate it.
I've been here a year less than AJ, and I call him a bean counter. And 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 I had to work hand in hand with him when he was the bean counter. And we, I used to work with him on budget, and the term is construction cost index. And I'd worked with him on stuff 10 years ago, and I said, okay, here's what this project's going to cost before we'd come to the board. And a year later, it went up $200,000, it went up a million dollars. And I'd tell him the construction cost index would go up 1% to 1.5% every month. And then we hit the pandemic, and it'd go up like 2% every month. And when the pandemic hit, it just kept going up and up and up and up, every month. And during construction during that time, contractors wouldn't give us a budget for a month. After a month, they'd have to give us another cost because the costs would keep going up. So we have a construction cost index that would go up at least 1% every month on estimate. So I'd estimate, give AJ an estimate for a budget, and it would be blown after four months when we would come to the board with that estimate. So the construction cost estimate index would go up every month. So our our construction cost index goes like this. So I just pulled out, to give you that, 1992 newspaper out of an old decoration, 1992 Jeep Cherokee, $15,000, 100 for a brand new Jeep. So price set to a new car today, our new houses, new buildings. We just looked for the cost for new construction on a building in Carson Commercial, $1,000 a square foot. And we looked at, AJ wasn't at that meeting. And I remember when I was estimating a buildings for square foot for us, like 350 a square foot. So if that gives you an idea, a building for a school, a school, that's the cost difference for 10 years.
And if I could add, yeah, I think that is, it's been dramatic, especially in the last six to seven years altogether, because I think of some of the the projects that were done, the expansions onto Fremont and Mark Twain Elementary Schools.
Eagle Valley.
Eagle Valley, I think any of those projects just from five, six, seven years ago literally would be double the cost at this point from what we paid. Because Fremont and Mark Twain, the expansions were $4 million, and I think just based on that square footage increase, I think we paid.
That for the school.
Yeah.
We paid that for building Mark Twain for a million.
Yeah, oh, in 1992, yeah. But then that, just that little expansion was 4 million, and now I I would guess it easily would be 7 to 8 million dollars to do that same expansion. So yeah, it's been very significant, and and the the revenue side, due to tax abatement laws and can't think of the other tax term I want, but it's just been, it's been restrictive in the growth in tax revenues. So it's it's put public entities in general, but school districts in particular, in a tough spot with trying to maintain facilities over time.
So the cost keeps going up on everything we do, any type of construction and maintenance costs that we do.
Thank you, and I'm sure you're, it's also a struggle finding those who will do it, so I appreciate your work.
I, they would rather work for us than Washoe.
Please strike that from the record.
They like working for us, so contractors, they're all busy, all the engineers are busy and the architects, but they always find time to work for us, it's easier to work for us than it is to work for Washoe. They cost more to work for Washoe for the red tape, they call it the Washoe factor.
Thanks, thank you for that, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Just being honest.
Yeah, and I just know, I mean, just for the record, I know that things move slow and people get frustrated because things aren't getting done as fast as, you know, we had all hoped and and wanted, but I know there's a lot of factors that play into that, so thank you.
Well, I would just add again that it's very important to do this maintenance because I've heard the superintendent talk several times. As things stand now, Carson City will not be able to build a new school. And so it's very important, the work you do.
Yes, if there are no other questions, we will go ahead and, are we good? Okay, so if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approves the CCSD revised capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2026 to 2030, holy cow, that's a long ways out.
Okay, so motion by trustee Walt and second by trustee Walker, any board discussion? See none, any public comment? See none, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you so much. All right, agenda item number 11, discussion and possible. Yes.
Just so the minutes are clear, it should reflect that trustee Peterson did not vote on that matter.
Trustee, okay, Peterson did not vote on that one, okay, so it's only six of us, okay. Thank you for catching that. Okay. Agenda item number 11, discussion and possible action on a resolution to approve an augmented and amended budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 to include revisions for certified enrollment, audited fund balance, carryforward amounts, and recommended augmentations to specific funds, and this is for possible action. Mr. Spencer, or Mr. Spencer Winward, I think this is your last item.
It is, I tried not to talk too much on the first two, so you weren't tired of hearing.
This is your moment.
Hearing my voice, so. Alrighty. Again, kind of in our budget cycle, we we first see this in April, we finalize it in May before we have a lot of the moving pieces. Now we have a pretty good handle on a lot of those, and we we change this for what we hope is the last time to get us through the end of the fiscal year in June. And so a lot of those things that that updated is we have really good solid numbers from what our audit will be to update our our beginning fund balances. We've got more enrollment data rather than 10 days worth, and we can fine tune a lot of our expenditures, a lot of our salary benefits costs, which makes up the bulk of our expenses, and and get a good look of what we hope our budget to finalize for the rest of this fiscal year. Kind of before I get started, I just want to, a couple of cliff notes, some of you may have had the chance to to learn about budgets at a NASB conference, but just a reminder, page six of the budget shows all of the revenues and inputs. So the very first column of that of page six is the beginning fund balances from our May, our our May budget, which uses budgeted items from the previous year to now, those are all all updated to actual numbers. So you'll see a lot of changes there, and that kind of updates everything that we had available to us. Page eight shows everything that's flowing out of all of our different funds. So again, page six shows all of the funds, the general funds, about the top third of the page, and then each of the other funds are represented by a line on the bottom, about two thirds of the page. And then page eight shows all the expenditures, and they're organized by columns of one being salaries, two being benefits, three being services, another, and then the fourth column there is the ending fund balance for each of those. So, and then those are all summed, the very bottom of the the lower right corner of both those pages are the same number. That was reference of 174 million or so in our final budget, and 179 or so in this budget. A lot of that is because monies that were budgeted last year but not spent are now reflected in our opening fund balances. Doesn't necessarily mean that we have more money to spend. An example I'll give will be a parking lot project, Mr. Johnson just said that we did a lot of parking lot projects. If we had one that cost us $160,000, we started it last June, the work was nearly completed, but not quite, the company who we we contracted to do that with elected not to bill us until it was done, and it ends up being finished at August 1st and is billed. So that was an expense that was authorized, put on a purchase order, all the paperwork was done in the previous fiscal year, but we actually didn't realize the expense until this fiscal year. So the capital or bond projects fund that would house that project, the opening fund balance would start $160,000 higher. But then also, we have updated the CIP to the Construction Improvement Plan to include that, hey, that $160,000 we thought we were going to spend last year, we now know it's going to be spent this year. So even though that opening fund balance is included there, we've also included additional costs to cover that work that was essentially completed over the end of the fiscal year into the beginning of this one. I use that fund because our bond fund has a lot of volatility there, a lot of times, if we have a lot of projects in in process, sometimes that can be 3 or 4 million dollars that we had authorized to spend last year, but by the time paperwork and everything was complete, then it actually happens in this fiscal year. And so all of those items roll through on that page eight of all the expenditures. So just a kind of a quick, you know, those two pages tell you a lot about the budget. The other 70 pages behind that are a lot of the breakdown and flow through to those two pages. So as far as this this budget changes that from our May budget, we've had some slight updates from average daily enrollment, we've got a quarters worth of data for that. And then we've updated our staffing cost to be the most accurate that we possibly can, including call movements, if we have staff members that have moved mid-year, those are reflected in this. Our health benefit cost changes are reflected in that, any new hires between the beginning of the year and when we process this, which would be November sometime, is generally all included in there. And then general fund transfers were relatively flat collectively there, so. If we look at the general fund revenues, and feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions, don't wait till I stop talking, and you might forget what your questions are. Looking at a comparison of revenues from the the final budget to the amended, we've we made a small change because our enrollment has dipped a little bit, and and we've made an adjustment there. It reflects about $50,000 less in revenue. Now, when it's all said and done, the end of the year, that might be even lower, but we're pretty comfortable with that number for now. And we don't feel it's going to be the kind of thing that would be much lower, that that we need to make other adjustments at this time. So again, our our basic support is the bulk of that, and then a couple of the other general fund revenues remained unchanged, that 50,000 was all in our our pupil-centered funding plan, basic support. So from 80.8 million to 80.8 million if we're rounding, so really not much of a change there, but slight decrease in revenue. Our transfers, again, we have our PCFP funds, English learners, gifted and talented, net risk, that are very closely tied to our general fund budget. And other funds that have transfers, so these would be the ones that that would be have a potential change to our ending fund balance of the general fund. Our special education balance, oh boy, I apologize, I've got an old number on there, that 8.3 million should be 9.1. It was 9.1 in the May budget and 9.1 in the final budget, there was no change to that. One reason that's kind of important is, so we had additional PERS costs that have been rolled in, and ideally, we have more costs in special education, and then those would flow through to this transfer, but we were able to kind of take care of those additional costs without increasing the transfer of the special education fund. Our nutrition fund has an ending fund balance that will be sufficient to cover any deficit spending in that fund, so it will not affect our general fund balance. Summer school, the last couple of years, this has been largely taken care of by SFR funds, which are no longer available. So we're anticipating a small transfer to that, that did not change from the May final budget to this budget. One thing you'll notice is our, we didn't have a budgeted fund or transfer from the EL fund, or, excuse me, from the general fund to the EL fund, that did increase by about $120,000. And again, you could easily take a couple of of positions that are funded in the EL fund and move the expense to the general fund and leave that transfer alone. We felt it was best to reflect those costs in the EL fund and increase that transfer by that small amount. Our gate fund, and again, this is kind of color coded, if it's red, you know, there's a positive in front of that, it's because the transfer is increasing, but that's negatively negatively affecting the general fund balance, that's why the EL fund transfer increase is in red. Our gate fund transfer decreased by $50,000, and our at-risk decreased by $43,000, and those are largely just because of, when it was all said and done, all the position changes and salary and benefit expenses for each specific position in those funds, there were some differences there. When those all net out, there's a slight increase in our total transfer by $22,000. So not really a material change overall from those fund transfers and how they affect our general fund. Any questions at this point?
Questions? No? We're good.
Alrighty, so if we compare our expenditures from the May budget to this one, again, we we were able to, our staffing, salary and benefits, we've got a really good handle on those, we know which people are in which positions, which funds they're being paid from, we we know exactly what step they're being paid on, so we've been able to fine tune that. And we've included, we had some estimates for what our PERS increases were, that's all been kind of finalized and and adjusted out for what that would cost us for the rest of this year. And you see that it went up just a slight amount for our salaries and benefits. And again, I would take that because we had some pretty good estimates based off of what we provided in in the final budget, so not a huge difference there. The non-staffing costs, you'll see those go up by about $600,000. The bulk of that is carryforward funds, and that's where each of our site budgets and departments, the budgets that are in charge of, we allow them to carry forward a small amount. The reason we do that, it it is beneficial for smarter spending because if we didn't do that, all those funds become use it or lose it, and people may not think through their purchases the most wisely because they just don't want to lose that money, so they're going to spend on whichever they can. The ability that they can carry some of that forward helps just to promote smarter spending, and then also gives them a little bit of a of autonomy over their their site budgets, have a little more flexibility if they know they they can carry an amount over from one year to the next.
So if they were able to do that, then why is it, if it's a carryover, so you're looking at, it's close to the 800, you know, so you say that there's an increase of expenditures of $867,000. And if it's a carryover, why is it a negative?
That's an increase of our budgeted expenditures. So and what the carryover represents, let's say for a site that we allowed $25,000 of carryover and they didn't spend it, that's 25,000. that's twenty five thousand dollars that was budgeted last year. We didn't include that in our May final budget because when we had to do that in May, there's a potential, they might have had a twenty five thousand dollar balance available, but they could spend that between May and June. So it's not reflected in our final budget. But we do roll that carry forward over in our amended December budget because we now know, hey, they really didn't spend that twenty five thousand. So we're going to increase your budget authority for your site by that twenty five thousand, so it's available for you to spend this year. Or if you continue to choose to carry forward twenty five thousand dollars, then that that carry forward would roll to the next year.
Trust you all, I apologize. I just want to clarify too. So where it says increase of that's not a a negative sign, it's actually a little swiggle. And so I just want to clarify that it's not not a, because if I understood, you said it's going down, and I don't know if you were thinking that was a negative.
I guess I'm looking at as an expenditure, an expenditure as being a negative because you're spending it.
Yeah, sure.
You know, so I'm looking at it that way. Is because what I'm trying to find and maybe, you know, I'll wait for this at the end for you to address. But the difference between the two budgets that you proposed in May and then now we're looking at a what is it, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty two. So in May, we accepted we four point five million dollar deficit spending. Now you're asking us to approve a five point five deficit spending. So I'm trying to find where is that nine hundred and seventeen thousand? But then if you put in the twenty two thousand of the transfer, it's actually we're what I look at it as, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, we're overspending nine hundred and thirty nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty two dollars. So I'm trying to find that in there.
The nine hundred and seventeen would be very simply this eight hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars plus our fifty thousand reduction of revenue. And those two really equal the difference in that deficit increase of the taxation deficit. So I'll talk a little bit more about that, and hopefully I will address all your questions at that point.
And I think when I think about it, we also have to remember wearing contract on a lot of these items. And so it's not as easy as just making cuts in December because we've obligated funds and we have employees that we have contracts with at this time. And so it's kind of like we're we're squaring it away, we're balancing it up here for this year with what we actually have based on what our projection was. And then I think looking forward, we tighten the projection up accordingly for the next year.
That's correct. And there's a lot of of items that could not be changed if we needed to reduce spending right away, but we've been, we've used enough foresight, I think, to to prevent that. And and as you recall, the beginning of this year, we knew that we were kind of needed to have a planned spend out of two, two and a half million dollars just based off where our ending fund balance was. We there was no need for us to continue to increase that. It would provide no benefit to the district and potentially would just provide a sweeping of funds back to the state education fund. So and again, the the increase of eight hundred and sixty seven thousand to our expenditures, that's in red because that will negatively affect our ending fund balance. That's that's why I chose red there. Any questions on on the differences here? I will admit a little mea culpa. I did make an error in the final budget with the transportation budget. An amount that should have been two hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars. I missed a zero, and it was at twenty four thousand, five hundred dollars. So I made that adjustment. There's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollar net adjustment that's included on top of our carry forward in those non-staffing costs. So they had a sufficient budget to get through December, but we wouldn't have budget to cover fuel and transportation costs if that adjustment weren't made. So overall, if we if we look at our revenues and our expenditures and the the deficit, so here in yellow, this reflects our taxation deficit. One of the easiest spots to find that in the budget is on page two. Now, there's explanation there and shows what that taxation deficit is. And that, we call that the taxation deficit because that's the form prescribed by taxation, and that's what they look at. A couple of things that that includes, that includes a million dollars of contingency that we have no intention of spending at this point, but we budget it for unforeseen items that may may happen. If if we have something happen to one of our buildings that that causes a million dollars of of expense that we need to incur to continue operating, then we have that available to us and would take steps necessary to to use that budget authority at that time. So the other item that factors into that, the difference between the taxation deficit and the structural deficit is our carry forward. And again, in the final budget, we estimate a small amount of kind of, hey, we we assume this so much, we'll roll forward. But then once we have those actual amounts, that increases to to right around five hundred thousand. So again, as you mentioned, our taxation deficits roughly a million dollars higher, just shy of a million dollars higher than than what we presented in May. Here, this is kind of shows you what the taxation and the structural deficit deficit was of the final budget, so four point five million. And it was not quite four point five minus our million of contingency was is would be three point five and about three hundred thousand carry forward is makes it three point two is our structural deficit. Structural meaning, that's what if we spent every budget a dollar minus our contingency, that would be the amount that we had expected our ending fund balance to reduce. And with the amended, we've gone up by seven hundred thousand. And and again, that's largely because, you know, we had a slight reduction in revenue. We've trued up our salary and benefits costs, and we've moved that carry forward to its default amount of right around five hundred thousand. And as you recall, in October, when when we kind of projected, here's where we think we look at where we had more data from our our negotiations. We we anticipated our budget to be three point nine million. So I feel pretty good about that number since once we got all the numbers squared away, we were right at three point nine million. So this just includes kind of a picture of the slide from that October presentation where our our previous deficit was three point two million. We anticipate additional seven hundred thousand of that. And our our estimated structural deficit was three point nine million, which is right where it sits in this budget. So any questions at this point? Is what you had questions specifically about the budget, so I'll make sure I got those addressed for you. Or, excuse me, about the deficit.
About the budget? You know, I understand being in the middle of the school year and having contracts that you you can't get out of. But if we looked at any because what I think at the October meeting we gave the school district, what was it, what we would be comfortable with, right? And what did we say? I think.
That was for the the FY twenty seven.
Right, for FY twenty seven, we said, you know, it would be like at around three, right, two point nine, three. And now, you know, we're looking at more of an increase in the middle of the year. So to say that, you know, I'm a tad bit nervous is an understatement. So is there any, I mean, do we look at at this point in time in the middle of the year? Any contracts that we can get out of at the beginning of the year? You know, I mean, that might end December thirty first of twenty twenty five. Can we, have we looked at those to say we're not going to renew them on January first of twenty twenty six because it is not a necessity?
We have very few contract contracts that run on the calendar year. Most of them run our fiscal year. Just fiscal year slash school year, which are fairly well aligned. So it's not very common that we have something that ends this year. And generally, if we do, I mean, if we have any positions that become vacant, we're looking at everything. It's like, is this position that we can go without filling? Can we? Can we not fill this for a time and and, you know, give it a trial run to see if we can do without this this position? So any position that becomes vacant, we're looking to see, you know, is this mission critical? Which we run very thin, and generally it's, we don't have positions that, oh, we can do without that. But any that we do, anything that we can do, we're we're trying to to see. Is there a way we can get by and even can we try this for six months and see if we can make it through the school year? So we are doing everything we can to make sure that, hey, is there any savings? One thing that I may add, you know, we'll talk a little bit more next month when we present the audit. But our our last year budget had about a two point one, two point two million deficit is what we had budgeted. And our numbers aren't final yet, but our our ending fund balance for general fund will should not be negative next year. So that two point two million dollar deficit is really sitting more at a zero. And that's because we have to budget for everything we may potentially have to spend. And we know there's going to be, you know, some ones, even if we have a vacancy in a position for a month, there's a little bit of savings there. We have some, we have, you know, if fuel costs go down, we kind of had a budget on based off of a certain price per gallon, price point per gallon of fuel. If it goes down, we've got some savings there, but we don't really try and sweep and and realize those savings right away because they could go up before the end of the year as well. But when it's all said and done, historically, we've come in under what our deficit budgets have for the last four or five or more years.
Because just looking at page two and, you know, looking at that, you know, the deficit, I think you're, you know, with the goal that the the board has asked you to try to to achieve. At this rate, it looks like this is going to be an extremely, extremely hard goal to to give to us.
It is a challenge. I think we're, I think we're willing to accept it. And there's been a lot of, a lot of conversations already about how, because we know it's not, we can't wait till May to try and decide what that's going to be. There's a lot of a lot of planning and operations going on now on what it will take to to get to a deficit that's acceptable to you collectively as a board. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Other questions? Richard?
Yeah, at one of our meetings when we discussed the budget, and I think Molly touched on it briefly. You guys were, I thought, had committed to coming back to the board with projected or cuts that could be made for us to consider. Is that still going to happen? Because honestly, I mean, I'm not saying anything I haven't said for the last seven years. We cannot continue deficit spending. We're down to twelve million dollars ending fund balance now. If we have another two or three million dollar deficit next year without taking some corrective action, we'll be down to nine million, say. And it's not going to be many years before we're down, if we continue this kind of rate of spending until we're down to where the state may look at and say you're not really fiscally responsible.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that was referencing to changes we could make operationally for FY twenty seven. Because again, if we took a carbon copy of this year into next year, we would be overspending. So we're looking at ways. There weren't really changes, which again, if there's anything we can change during this fiscal year, we can, but as Mr. Walker kind of pointed out, there's there's some things we're kind of locked into and and it wouldn't be very healthy to try and drastically make changes mid-year. But as we're starting to formulate and shape up what next year looks like, we're making all sorts of considerations to see, you know, different scenarios of how that could look like to bring that spending in line to what you as as board members would accept.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, but I know you can't really change things midstream, so to speak. But just wanted to get a commitment that we're still going to be highly involved in ongoing budget things, maybe more often with ideas of how to make certain reductions without really impacting students. That's what I would be looking for. Is that still what we're going to do?
That is, that is how we're moving forward as far as how that gets presented to the board. That that might still be kind of taking shape on on what our best practice would be in in presenting that information to you as board members.
I think the board would like to be more highly involved in it.
Yeah, and and if I could, Mr. Varner, just a, just a reminder to, so at the first meeting in April, the board will hear the tentative budget historically, and then the the final budget for next year isn't approved until the last meeting in May. Historically, whatever the situation is, usually within the month of February, we are, we are coming to the board, and if there are changes, we will changes that are being suggested, we will be bringing those to you. So so there's three, four almost months up until that final budget is approved, where you'll be getting opportunities to hear about some of the things that we're looking at and considering and be able to give feedback on those.
Thank you.
Mike, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to point out, these are conversations that are happening in every school district in the state. And this is a funding issue. This is an economic issue statewide. And so yeah, it's concerning. We need to advocate for adequate school funding as we've been doing for a number of years. And we have to be responsible, but we also have to remember that eighty something percent of our revenue, our capital is tied up in personnel. And you can't just cut that in the middle of a school year without impacting students because that personnel are teaching in classrooms and leading schools and driving buses. And so well, we really have to make sure that we're advocating and talking to our lawmakers about is the fact that they set, even though there was an investment in education, it was just a drop in the bucket and it was a backfill. And the fact remains that with inflation and step and column, which is already built into our contracts, those increases in revenue, there's nothing that our district office can do besides cut staff. And so we have to go to Mr. Wallace and our other leaders and really have a talk about what the economic situation is, as we've done in the past. We've faced real dire fiscal situations in this district, and we've all come together. And then when things were a little rosier, we fixed it. And so I think I would ask the board to work with the entire community and really be open to creative means to meet the needs. I guarantee you, the last thing you want to do is scare all your teachers that you're going to cut all these positions because I will be hiring. And I know a district between here and where I work that will be hiring a lot of teachers as well. And the big giant isn't too far away, and they're always hiring people. So we have to be responsible when we're talking about our budget. We have to know that it doesn't matter if we've talked about it for seven years. I've been on the board for nine years, and the whole time I've been uncomfortable with the way school funding is done in this state, just as superintendents statewide have been pushing back for since I've been in school. It's the system we have, and until the change comes, we have to realize we we operate on projections and then we shore it up and get it balanced by the end of the year, and then we make another projection in April, and we do the best we can do. And I would take the advice of this staff over a lot of different school districts within the state. We're one of the ones that people look at and say, how does Carson get it right so often? And so I want to say that to Spencer. I want to say that to AJ, who was before him and Mr. Stokes. And we have to be patient, and we have to know this isn't a Carson City issue, this is a Nevada issue, and we're going to have to work through it.
And I agree with you, and I was not advocating cutting funding this year. I'm advocating that we look at it closely in the future and that the board is highly involved in developing the next budget.
Thank you. And and I would agree with your comment, Trustee Varner. And I even wonder if it if it would be possible to have some sort of a workshop, you know, with the board and your, you know, your cabinet, just to brainstorm and ideas. I mean, that may be a way for us to, you know, start looking into savings, you know?
And I definitely do not want to scare any teachers because I've said all along, every time I bring this up, is that the needs of the children have to take first priority, and that is keeping good teachers in the classrooms.
Thank you. Okay, well, Mr. Wenwer, thank you so much for this report. We appreciate it. And this, if there are no, and if there are no other questions or comments, this is an action item.
I'll make the motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the augmented and amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six by approving the resolution and instructing the Chief Financial and Operations Officer to file the documents as necessary to comply with NS, NRS, chapter three fifty four.
Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, so motion by Trustee Varner and second by Trustee Roberts. Any more? Any board discussion? C non, any public comment? C non, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you, Mr. Wenwer. That's a lot of work that you put into it, and we appreciate your patience and answering
Thank you to all of you as well.
our questions. Agenda item number 12, discussion and possible action on the superintendent's annual evaluation for the 2025 calendar year, and this is for possible action. So we all have in our packets, um, a bundle of joy, right? So we have our, um, information compiled of all of the evaluation that we did for Superintendent Feeling. So just a recap of, of our process, um, that we used to evaluate him. We, um, evaluated him based on five standards. This year, we, uh, he created four, um, goals of, uh, for superintendent goals, and those were approved by the board. And additionally, he provided us his self-assessment with his achievements for the year. And then, um, Renee sent us a survey that we compiled to do the evaluation. And then, we send, um, Renee the information, and she, um, put it into a Google Doc. And we have the overall score. I, I assume you guys had a, um, an opportunity to review the compiled evaluation document that Renee provided to us. Any questions on that or comments? If not, then we look at the very end of the, um, document, and the overall score is 1,003, which places him on the super, uh, superior rating, uh, which is, uh, 1,176 being the highest and then the lowest 941. So, congratulations, uh, superintendent. I think that is, um, an excellent rating. Do we have any comments, uh, that any of the board members want to provide to Superintendent Feeling?
I think Mr. Feeling does a superior job for our school district, and I'm glad, I'm glad that our ratings show that. And I look forward to seeing the great things. You know, you're one of the veteran superintendents in the state, even though you're in, what, year four? And so, really, to have this strong of a start, I can't wait to see where you are in 10 years. And so, thank you for your service to the district.
Anybody else? Yeah. Yeah, no. Ditto, um, of that as well. But, um, no, I do think we, Carson City School District is extremely fortunate to have you. I think it's one thing that we're extremely fortunate to have as well in being at NASB. You know, you, you see this as well, but, um, you're not just the superintendent, you're a parent of students that are within the school district as well. And I think that is extremely important, um, because you, you're out there, you know, with the kids. Um, I think we're extremely fortunate that you live in the community as well. Um, people see you, you know, um, just rotary every week. You know, you're there, and, um, you're a very active member within the community, which I think, you know, speaks volumes as well. And, um, that is on your own time. And I think that we need to appreciate that, which I know I do, um, appreciate that as well, um, that you are active in the community. You're seeing, you're not behind a closed door in an office, and I think that speaks volumes. Richard?
Yeah, I'll ditto some of the comments, but you, I think you do a great job. One thing that I think that we enjoy here is a great working relationship with the board members and you as a superintendent. A lot of boards, uh, I've heard around the state, really do not enjoy that aspect of their work. So, uh, thank you for always being willing to engage with us, to provide us information. I greatly appreciate, um, that you send out your weekly updates of your activities, that you reach out to us when something occurs that we need to know about. You, you do that, you're very good about doing that. And, uh, I think you're just doing a great job overall, so thank you.
Anybody else?
I, no, I also want to, um, thank you, Superintendent Feeling, for, um, taking the time, um, to meet with me, um, before the, um, board meeting and work on the agenda. I, um, appreciate that you were willing to make a little adjustment this, this year and, um, work on the agenda in advance. That was very helpful. And I really appreciate, um, you taking the time and explaining to me a lot of the questions that I had. I feel like I learned a lot this year from you, and I really appreciate it. Um, I also appreciate the fact that, um, anything that we bring to your attention, you, um, act on it. And it doesn't matter if it's a small thing or a big thing, you, um, don't ignore any, any of our, our concerns. And so, I very much appreciate that. And, um, and I appreciate that you are definitely, um, very supportive of the entire, um, district. You're definitely a, an, an amazing administrator that I have a lot of respect for, and I appreciate, what you do for all of our students.
All right. So, yes, if, and if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees deem the overall rating of Mr. Andrew Feeling, Superintendent of the Carson City School District, to be superior for the 2025 calendar year.
Second. I'm sorry? Second.
Second by Michelle. Okay. So, um, motion by trust, uh, by trustee Walker, and second by trustee Peterson. Any board discussion? C non, any public comment? And at this moment, I would, I would say, would you care for?
Thank you.
Write any comment?
I, I feel like most of us in our, uh, careers, whatever they are, are, are fortunate to have a, a boss that you like working with. And I have seven. So, and I enjoy working with each one of you. So I think that says a lot, and, um, it, it is, I, I still, I say, I feel so fortunate that however things happen, that I ended up here now, almost 12 years ago, which is pretty incredible. And just such a, a great community, and it, and it, I, I cannot overstate the importance of having a strong board that communicates well, that works well together, and is willing to engage in dialogue, um, on, on whatever the topics of concern are. Uh, that does not happen everywhere. And it makes an enormous difference for, for this district and gives it so much more stability that is so beneficial for everyone who happens to work here. So thank you so much for the work you do. Thank you for your support of, of me, um, over these years. And we just continue, I just continue trying to improve. There's, there's always going to be room to, um, make things better and, um, try to do well by every one of our kiddos. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I think we have a motion on the table, so all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. So again, thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for submitting the, uh, information on time. And also, thank you, Ms. Renee, for putting that together, for compiling that report. We appreciate it.
All right. Agenda item number 13, approval of consent agenda, and this is for possible action? Okay, so motion by trustee Walker, and second by trustee Wal. Any board discussion? C non, any public comment? C non, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, agenda item number 14, informational items, and this is for discussion only. No action will be taken. Any questions, concerns, comments? C non? Okay. Agenda item number 15, request for future agenda topics. Okay? Molly first, and then Mike? Yeah. So I would like to, if we could, in our second January, um, meeting, review the superintendent's evaluation. Maybe get rid of some things that you've can, well, things that you've consistently, you know, have done like 3.7, you know, an average of 3.7 and above. Eliminate those and maybe add in some new things. Oh, yeah. You, you never know, I'm only one of seven. Simple, keep, keep it simple. Okay, Mike?
So that was, I was actually going to recommend revision. I think it, it felt a little reductive. And then also, I've tendered my resignation as a trustee, and so this will be my final meeting, and I look forward to seeing the great things you guys do in the future. So I'm relocating to be closer to work, and it's been an honor to serve.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mike, for, very, very much for everything you have done for this, um, board and for our district. You leave a huge legacy, and, um, we will do our very best to follow.
I'm an unlucky person.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and, um, as, as a reminder, we got some cake for you, so please stay after the meeting, everyone. Please stay after the meeting for, um, and join us for some cake. All right. I do have a future agenda item. If we could get a presentation on the capital improvement projects, um, that would be good. I know you and I talked about it, um, AJ. And then, um, and then also, I'm sorry, also, if we can bring, um, the, um, the policy number 408 on classified staff promotion and regulation, and also the classified staff employment policy, so we can revisit those. Awesome, thank you.
Trustee Ramirez, just for clarification, trustee Varner, you were at the last Bond Oversight Committee meeting, correct? Do, do you, if we were going to, um, kind of give an overview of the, the capital projects that we have completed, did you feel like, um, that the presentation that reviewed the projects that happened over the summer, was that a, a pretty thorough review of everything as far as you're concerned?
Yeah, I thought it was a real thorough review, and I would, uh, feel comfortable bringing that forward to the board.
Okay. At, at least as a starting point, and then if there's recommendations after that.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. All right. Any additional, uh, future agenda topics? Are we still going to continue the last meeting to have the budget, like, uh, funding?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Great. All right. Agenda item number 16, adjournment. Thank you so much, everyone. And again, don't go away, we got cake.